Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to our city council study session. Today is November 14th, 2023. It's 1:00 P. M., and we'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka just walked in. Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore is excused from the meeting.
Very good. Do you want to talk about the discussion agenda item, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Today, we do have for us a discussion on the recent citywide speed and traffic study. We have results and recommendations, and this item was presented by our traffic, or excuse me, Transportation Manager Ian Mattingly and our Public Works Director Gwen Roswith. I always mess that up, Gwen. I'm sorry. Rowitch. I just want to pronounce it the way it's written. And the city's on-call engineering consultant Strand Associates. So this is a study session item. There's no formal action to be taken. However, staff does request that council provide some feedback on the recommendations.
And I do want to recognize that we have our newly hired city engineer with us today, Randy Purum. Welcome, Randy. Randy's had seven years of experience with the town of Prescott Valley and also seven years of experience as a private, with private engineering companies or associations. So welcome to the city, Randy.
Looks like we're ready. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager for the city. First off, I'd just like to say, obviously, this being a study session, feel free to ask questions at any time of myself or Kyle Henderson from Strand. So today's study session will, as Katie said, focus on the recently completed citywide speed and travel time study. We do have the group from Strand that worked on the study here to go over the majority of the presentation. So to briefly go over our agenda, I'll cover the study background, you know, where, how we got here today, the study purpose and goals, and then Strand will come up and do their presentation of the majority of the findings and the recommendations. And then lastly, I'll come back up with next steps and some information regarding that. So as far as the study background goes, initially, Mayor Good had recommended that the city undertake a citywide traffic study. We had, there, there has been identified in the cities, in the general plan, the circulation element of the existing general plan, that we conduct a citywide traffic study. But subsequently, we came to a city council study session on September 22nd of '22 to discuss possible options for that study, as you may recall. And so we outlined some scope options, provided input on what we thought might be valuable, staff, and then that scope was then identified, and we did engage Strand. At that time, we did also include reference reports and documents that were already available that answered a lot of questions regarding a overall city transportation or traffic plan. And so the recommended scope focused on evaluation of existing conditions as kind of a first step, so we can see how we're doing, because a lot of what we hear is that we have issues regarding congestion and speeding in the city.
Yeah, let me interrupt you for a minute, Ian. When I was first elected to city council six years ago, one of the first things I asked our city manager at that time to take a look at the most recent citywide traffic study that we had conducted. And he said, well, let me get back to you next week. So my next meeting was, the answer was, we'd never done one. However, there was a small study that was conducted for the East Gurley area, but considering the increasing amount of traffic congestion, I thought it was about time that we did a thorough study and be able to use that data to be able to plan better traffic flow and movement for the benefit of the city residents and for their safety as well.
Thank you. So the main purpose of the study. Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Thank you. Just a quick follow-up question. I remember the conversation that we had here in September of last year around this. I think we're all supportive of the citywide traffic study. Can you remind us, Mayor's exactly right, we've been informed that though a citywide traffic study, I believe, you're, you're correct, that had not been conducted in the past, there've been multiple traffic studies for various areas of town. Can you just give us the 40-second version?
Sure. Well, you know, overall, our primary roadway system, our arterials and collectors are always included in the work done by Simpo, and we're a member agency of that. So we do regional transportation planning on our main road system, which shows us how it's doing and then recommends projects to move forward. And so we have that, that identifies things that, for instance, we've put in the streets infrastructure improvement program, the Street IP, has projects related to that. We have various other small area studies. I think we were talking about the east area. There's a south side traffic study that was done for downtown Mount Vernon area, various other ones. And then when we do large annexations, for instance, Deepwell, we obviously have traffic studies that kind of plan out the roadway. And so we have a lot of the parts. We don't have an overall one that would maybe conglomerate them together, but at the time we went to you guys in that study session, we really felt like moving towards that wouldn't be maybe the most efficient and effective thing, especially given the cost of it. And we really wanted to evaluate, like, some of our existing conditions to identify some problem areas, and then we can focus some solutions, and then if we have to do something in the future, we can go there. That's how I'd summarize that.
Gotcha. I appreciate that. That's a good reminder for me. It wasn't that nothing had been done in the past, and this is a brand-new idea, but the Mayor's idea of doing it all at once has the advantages you just pointed out. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
So coming out of that study session, we did identify a scope that we moved forward with. The main purpose of the study that we're going over today was to provide the city leadership staff and our citizens an understanding of the actual traffic conditions on our roadway system. Traffic often is mentioned as a top concern for our citizens, and speed and congestion is a common complaint. Collecting data to provide an objective comparison to known standards is useful to gauge how we are really doing, instead of just, you know, what we think how we're doing, or how we think we're doing. Through this effort, we can then identify roadway segments where speed and travel times are higher and may need to be addressed. And then finally, the study was tasked with making some recommended remediation measures and in specific areas, so that we can deal with those areas of concern. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Kyle Henderson with Strand. He's going to come up and take you through the study process and results.
Thank you, Ian. Again, thank you for having us to present the results of this study. And as I go through, if there are questions on any of the graphics, things like that going forward, just let me know, and we'll talk through them at that point. So again, this is our citywide traffic study. The key topics for the study itself are looking at that introduction project background that Ian provided. We'll go through the main data source, which is called Streetlight Data. I'll go through that a little bit more. That's where we got some roadway speed data, and also that corridor and travel time data that we look at for congestion. From that segment, we also then went out and got some field speed data that was collected with actual devices out in the field to get real-world spot, sorry, real-world spot speed studies, and through all this information, we put together some recommendations. Yep, I got to hit the right arrow. There we go. So the city identified corridors were evaluated to identify these problem areas. We looked at arterials, collectors, and locals. The initial roadway evaluation was done with that Streetlight data output, and what we get from there is, Streetlight data uses connected or smart vehicle data that is provided to them, and that gives us the trip and travel time data, because it pings the vehicles every, I believe that they're 30 seconds. So you get kind of some travel data, you can get OD data for other items, but we can then use that to see how traffic's moving throughout the city. We provided a review of this data, looking at the roadway congestion and travel times, and using those speeds out of the information. That's where we picked some locations for that spot speed analysis we'll talk about later on.
Kyle, can you define connected smart vehicle data?
So the best definition you can get from Streetlight themselves when we talk to them, it's anything that has, say, an OnStar system or a satellite navigation system. So most vehicles that are within the last 10 years should be within this connected vehicle data, because more and more vehicles are pinging back to some type of receiver, and that's where they get their data sources from. In general, it's about 15% to 20% of total trips, and what they use then is they know what the volumes are and what percentage or what volumes they're getting. So then for, say, if we're looking at volume data, they can use a factor to bring it up to what is being experienced on the other part of it.
Have you been able to analyze what percentage of local residents who do drive in their vehicles would be included in this analysis? Any kind of a percentage?
So when we talked to Streetlight about this, because there was a couple different data sources, they recommended using this connected vehicle data. It gives better information, and it has a penetration of about 10% to 15% right now, which is enough to draw good conclusions out of it. Yeah. So going through, there were 17 arterials evaluated throughout the city and kind of spread all around, and also 29 collectors that are tying between all those different arterials and roadways. I won't go through all of them here specifically, but we'll talk about them as we go through. For that data, we, the advantage of Streetlight is we can get a very large amount of information. So first, we picked a date range from May 1st of last year through February 28th of this year. We did exclude November 21st through January 3rd, because that's the holidays, not really representing average traffic. We looked at Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or Thursdays, because those are typically your most normal traffic days. And then we looked at AM and PM peak periods, which were defined in the morning. We looked at traffic from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. In the PM, we looked at 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. So with those pieces, you can see we have a very large amount of data that we can go through and look at to figure out how things are really working on there. Each corridor was broken down into segments with traffic signals or key intersection that's as the endpoints. Those segments are what we use to look at, travel through the area, look at the speeds, and you'll see that kind of in the results we have on, there's different percentages for each corridor itself, and that's representative of the segments themselves. So that key output data is the segment travel time and then those roadway speeds. So the segment speed analysis used to evaluate the overall corridor conditions, if we first look at the arterial roads, we looked at two different speeds. One is called the 50th percentile speed, and one's called the 85th percentile speed. Now, what I can say is 50th is your average speed, you know, it's right in the middle. 85th is what we typically use in engineering as, that is the speed you use to set a speed limit. So we wanted to look at what's the average and what's that kind of upper end of what we consider acceptable and normal. Through that, we bin the vehicles and used, anything that was within 5 miles an hour of the speed limit was one bin, anything that was 5 to 10 above was a second bin, and then 10 or above is a third bin. Same on the other side, 5 to 10 below was its own bin, and more than 10 below was another one. The first graphic we have here on the left for you is the arterial speed graphic showing how the traffic overall in these corridors looked. So 45% of the traffic in all these segments was within that 5 miles an hour of the speed limit. We look at that 5 to 10 above and below, you have about 20% in each of those, and less than 10% was either 10 above or 10 below, when you look at kind of a global scale. We'll look a little more in detail in the next slide. This is presenting the same data in a slightly different air method. What we're looking at still is arterial roadways. Now, this one has, I got about eight of them on there, and what we have for this is, now it's a bar chart, so blue bar on the far left, that is 10 or more below. As we can move on, then we have 5 to 10 below, within 5. That light yellowish-orange one, that is the 5 to 10 above, and then the deeper orange is anything that's 10 or above. Looking at this, you know, most everything, for the most part, has that generally within 5 miles an hour is the highest percentage. Exception here with this arterial graphic here would be Granite Dell's Parkway definitely was skewing on the higher side. Otherwise, most things were kind of dispersed fairly evenly. I'm going to go to the next set of arterial roads. And again, on this one, Senator Highway popped out to us, as everybody was going at least 5 miles an hour more than the speed limit within our evaluation itself. And also, some sections of Williamson Valley Road were a little bit higher as well. We did the same study for the collectors that we were looking at. Now, I suppose I didn't define this. So an arterial road is your main arteries. That should serve most of the traffic throughout the city. A collector is a good way to get between arterials, and that then provides generally a connection from your local road you live on. A lot of times, you'll go to a collector, the collector will get to our arterial. So that's kind of how roads are organized within the roadway network itself. So these collector roadways still are serving a large chunk of traffic, but they should have a little more local traffic on them as well. With the same set of bins, that 5, 10, within, then 5 and 10 above, the collectors definitely had lower speeds overall. So in this one, we had 63% of the traffic was within that 5 miles an hour. We had about 20% still at that 5 to 10 above, but say, the 10 above was down to only 2%. So definitely the speed trends were a little lower on the collector roadways, which you would expect, because you're now getting a little more toward serving local areas. This is our first plot, looking at the corridors again, and we can look at this and see there's a couple of the collectors that were trending a little bit higher, such as Blooming Hills Drive and Copper Basin Road. Both had more speeds above than they had at that 5 to 10 range, or sorry, within 5 range. Also, we had, High Aslumpa Village Lane also was in that same general category. Our next bin of collector roads, we see Haisley Road. It had, 50% of the traffic was within that 5 miles an hour, but then everybody else was skewing a little bit higher, and also Pippin Trail. Now, some of these roadways, we get to a spot where we're getting lower and lower volumes, so the percentages will kind of go a little bit more, but it might be, you know, 5% of a 2,000 daily traffic or 1,000 daily traffic. I have one more here. Again, looking through this, the ones that really stuck out here was Thumbbutte Road, where most traffic was going that 5 to 10 miles an hour above the speed limit. So looking at these, that's kind of our initial look at, okay, here's kind of the speeds, and we're going to use this data later on to pick our spot locations that we'll talk about a little later in the presentation. The second bin of data from the Streetlight was looking at this corridor travel time and congestion. Those measured travel times that we got out of the data collection was what we then looked at and compared to free-flow travel times of, we know each segment length, we know what the speed limit is, and that was what we assumed as, that is the normal speed that you should be going at. And we've used that as our comparison for what was measured within Streetlight. Anything that was between 120% to 170% or higher, as far as your travel time, so think about it, if you're at 100% of the travel time, you're going twice as slow. That's kind of the best way to look at it. And these numbers, they correspond to ways that we can look at levels of service and what is defined within the Highway Capacity Manual for when we're looking at corridor Again, we're going to look at arterials separate from collectors. Now, with this one, we're looking at two different ones. Again, we're looking at that 50th, which is your average. That is what most people are going to experience in most of your peak periods. And then this one, we looked at the 95th percentile. That can be viewed as, that's either the worst two or three minutes of the day, or it's the worst day that you have within, say, a two- or three-month period. It's a very sharp, very short time period when you have that much delay, and we'll use that to compare and contrast how things operate on average versus what could be considered a worst case when you have a really high day. So we're going to bin this into different areas. So we have anything that's within 50% of the free-flow travel time, then we're going to have another one that's 50% to 120% of the free-flow travel time, 120% to 170%, and then anything 170% or above. And you'll see that on this next slide, how those go in there. The first thing we wanted to look at was just all the arterials. We did this analysis for them and looked at how everything looked. So if we look at the big blue piece on the left side, we're going to look at 50th percentile first. So on an average with your arterials, 67% of the traffic is going to be served with a level of service A or level of service B. That's that below 50%. So a level of service grade is very much like a grade in school. As are better, Fs are not as good, and you slide along that scale. If we still look at that arterial during the 50th percentile, then we have, most of the traffic is that 90% LOSA or B, level of service C, which is still acceptable, is 3%. Then you have level of service D or E. That's when you're going to start feeling congestion a little bit more. That was only 2% of the time, and our level of service F, which is going to be, you're going to notice that congestion, you're going to be going slower. That was for 5% of the segments during that average time. The pie chart that's on the right there shows that 95th percentile, that worst part of the time. So with this, you can still see 40% of the segments on your arterials still stay operating at level of service A. Only 14, or sorry, 34% reach that level of service F. And what you're trying to do is maintain generally E or better is what your goal is for your corridors and arterials themselves.
So does that area on the 95th percentile, where you've got a combined 46% that are traveling either a DE or F, isn't that a area of concern?
Well, it could be or it couldn't be. It really depends. This was kind of to give a snapshot overall of the city itself. We'll go get into the corridors themselves. Like, for instance, on Gurley Street, within your downtown segment, during that peak 95th, I would expect things to be operating poorly. So those slow travel times are going to likely be present on a certain segment of your roadway during that peak time, no matter what you do for the most part. Because, you know, you look at your downtown area, you're serving vehicles, but you're also serving pedestrians and commerce and things like that. So it is going to be slower. It's going to be during that peak time, just going to be in that level of service F.
So this type of analysis allows you to kind of focus and target in those areas that are having the biggest impact for traffic flow, and then, once you identify those, then I'm hoping you would make some recommendations on how to resolve that.
Correct. Yep. We can look at this and know what we're seeing for operations versus where it is and what the situation is, and kind of see, does this seem reasonable? What should we propose as ideas to help them?
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering, I don't see any page numbers on here, but if you go to the one that is actually the Montezuma Street Evaluation, shows downtown congestion. And, you know, we, I think we're still experimenting with that always stop. Would there be an opportunity to assess that and maybe make recommendations if it's considered to be working or it's not working? The scramble.
Yeah, so you're going to see later, we kind of have this three-dimensional graphic, and maybe that's what you're looking at.
Yep, that is.
Okay, that shows, yeah, some spikes in the downtown area. One of the things that they have said, and we'll get to this later, is that there might be some opportunity to look at signal timing on Gurley and Montezuma in order to try to fix those things. I've expressed to Strand, and we've talked internally a little bit about the fact that that might be challenging when we have certain conditions going on, like uneven spacing of signals, the scramble, left turns at some intersections, left turn, not at others. And so while the study did initially have, it does have some recommendations for looking at that corridor and maybe looking at signal timing coordination, those will be challenges. What we do with the scramble or keeping the scramble will complicate that. And so, you know, I can't answer whether or not we could do that yet, but that is a complication to it, and it's a concern for staff just because of all the things we've got going downtown. It might be challenging to get a lot of good improvement on those corridors.
Sorry about that. So if I'm looking at this evaluation, just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You're implying that the congestion happens 48% of the time, so that's literally half the day. And that picture you had up there is absolutely accurate.
Should I go to that? You can go there. When you say 48%, was that on that other graphic, or is that on?
No, it was on this one right here, where it says Montezuma Street.
Oh, yeah, she's on the three-dimensional one still.
Okay.
The congestion is happening 48% of the time, is that correct?
So, no, that, this is representing that PM peak congestion, and it is taking a look at the, da-da-da-da-da, the average trip speeds. So it is, the 48% is basically meaning that, say, if you're, I'm just going to be hypothetical and I have it on here, say you have a one-minute trip from one spot to the next. If this is telling you it's a 48% congestion, that one-minute trip would take about 1 minute and 28 seconds.
About 1 minute 30. Yeah, he might want to explain that that graphic is different than these graphics.
Yes.
So when he gets to that, he could probably expand on that, maybe reduce some confusion.
So is that, in your evaluation, is that scramble considered to be working, or is it considered a problem?
We, this, this study did not look at individual intersections.
Okay, thank you.
And evaluate them specifically. It looked at the corridor and what affects, how is car, how are cars moving down that corridor according to travel time? And then we can, we align that to level of service, so that it could be easy to understand that in this segment, we have A or B or this. You know what I mean? This is averages across the city right now that we're looking at. In a minute, we're going to go to individual whole streets. Yep.
And then they actually have additional information in the report beyond what we're going to show you on segment, segmented information.
Yeah, let's not get ahead of ourselves. Let's go ahead and finish up the basic analysis here, and then we can get into individual locations.
Thank you.
Okay, as Ian mentioned, yeah. Now, we're going to look at, we have now roadway corridors on here. They're going left to right and down from the top. So we, you know, for this one, we have Prescott Lakes Parkway all the way down to Deepwell Ranch Road. Same general color scheme we had on the last, where the deep blue now is our level of service A and B. The almost, there's a light blue to gray that is going to be our level of service C. Then now we have, that yellowish is that level of service DE threshold, and then the orange is the level of service E. So if we look at this, you know, for instance, you see Montezuma Street. This is, again, we're back at that average day or 50th percentile. Montezuma Street has the most, that is at the DE or F. Those segments are really all within that downtown area, where we're going to be expecting to see this. One thing we do, you know, this represents kind of a percent of the length of what we really looked at, because, you know, one segment might be about a tenth of a mile, another segment might be closer to a mile. So we can't say, you know, what was it? This is kind of saying that percentage of our total length of this corridor that we did look at is what's kind of been impacted by that, but we can look at it. We have more tables and stuff that we'll have later on that are in the report that can be used to really look at exactly where this is happening and what that distance is for any D or E or F.
I think your three-dimensional graphic on Montezuma's case, you'll show that in a minute.
Yep.
You'll show the differences in the segments itself.
Yep. Okay, so this is the rest of the arterial roadways, looking at that average again. And you see, most everything is within the blue, except, you know, if we look at Whipple Street, there are a few spots that are showing some delay in congestion during that average time period, and I think those are both due to, that's all due to signals that we found and will be talked about later on as well. The next graphics here are now looking at this heaviest day, sorry, heaviest period of the day. So this is that couple minutes during that peak hour. So we're talking a very short period of time, but you definitely see that these arterials, they're functioning like arterials. When they get busy, they do have delay. It's noticeable. Now, again, you know, we're talking about taking our travel time from a minute to three minutes, something like that. So we're not necessarily going to be queuing long, long distances, but we're going to be slow traffic, we're going to be impacted by just congestion and everybody that's out there. And we look through this, you know, a lot of the ones that we have on here have either signals, or they're in the downtown area, or commercial areas. Those are what really showed as locations where congestion happens during that. Most likely PM peak hours, when we're going to see that 95th percentile type condition happen. This is the rest of those arterial roadways, again, with the same graphic we have here, where we're showing there is more of that congestion, but this is kind of what we expect to see, and we'll get to a little more detail in those graphics that you were looking at in a minute. First, I'm just going to go through the collector roadways with the same information. The collector roadway trend was, again, like speed. They also operate with less congestion and delay, because now during our 50th percentile, we only have 1% of that LOSF. When we get to the 95th, we're still only looking at 7%, and most of the area that we studied, 80% of it's still at level of service A or B during that peak time, and you'll see that also. When we look at the individual roadways themselves, with the 50th percentile, for the most part, nothing is getting beyond really LOSA, B, or C. For instance, Roster Street, I believe that one, the level of service F, is because there's a signal there that is tying into, and that one leg of the signal, when you look at it with our delay for the signal, it gets to a level of service F. And now with the collectors, this is also the 95th percentile, and again, you can see a lot of blue is left. a lot of blue is left on here. We just have a few of them that are starting to get delay. Again, a lot of them are due to signalized intersections where one leg of the signal, with its average delay during that 95th percentile, is going to trigger into a poor operations for the travel time itself. Because in a signal where you might have 30 seconds of delay on a leg, that's still operating well. But if it's a short segment we're looking at, it's going to get us into a D, E, or F.
Yeah. And I just wanted to add on Sunrise Boulevard, you could see it. I think that's the impact from the 69 signal during the peak hour when the state is running their coordinated patterns. So then you would expect the signals to run longer and impact the sunrise travel time. So that should, just wanted to clarify, that makes sense to that. And then Gail Gardner's likely because of Willow Creek Road and Iron Springs impact during, when those arterials start to feel the impact and signals give them more time, then it impacts the collectors.
So now we're going to get into those graphics that you were mentioning over there. So first, we're looking at Gurley Street. This is a graphic that comes right out of streetlight data. And again, so I've got these different bars on here. And in this one, for instance, we go from a congestion, the highest peak is about 50%. So we look at our example again. So with how it's calculating this number, if we say the congestion is 50%, it's basically saying that your travel time is 50% longer than standard. So if you had one minute, now it's taking you a minute and a half to get through that piece. So this is just a good way to flag where these areas are. So you can see, from McCormick Street to Mount Vernon Avenue through the downtown area on Gurley Street, we see that congestion peak. That definitely makes sense. And also out by Sheldon Street, you have another peak of congestion with those signals that are out there as well. Now, we jump to Montezuma Street. This is the one that you had mentioned. Again, we look at Carlton to Sheldon Street going through the downtown area. We're seeing that peak up again to where during this time, we're going to see travel times about double. So for instance, if it took you, I don't know, let's say, three minutes to go from Carlton to Sheldon Street, this is saying that during the peak time, you're going to take about four and a half minutes to make that same trip. So you're going to notice it, but it's also, you're still getting through, and it's that congested downtown area is what we're seeing, definitely causing the biggest impacts to these arterial roadways. Now, we've got another one looking at Sheldon Street, and this is highlighting the area from Montezuma to Pleasant Street as having a little bit more congestion. Now, when you get further to the east, there still is congestion there, but we're talking, you know, adding 15 seconds to a minute worth of travel time type of thing. So it's going to be noticed potentially, but really, you're still going to be moving fairly freely. So you're going to be not noticing it nearly as much as when you're further to the west on that corridor. I think this is my last one. So, yeah. This is now Willow Creek Road. This was one that we noticed as, you know, as we get kind of away from the downtown area. This one definitely had a few different peaks going through there. And generally, this is caused a lot by some of the signals that are in those areas as you had from the downtown out to the north. So again, with this one, we have these peaks, in this case, up to about 40%. So it's not quite as much congestion as in downtown, but it definitely was noticeable. And this was reflected in some of the recommendations we put together, and we'll talk about a little later on. So looking back at that speed data that was collected, we used that information to put together a focused plan to get actual, in-the-field counts using some of our data collection equipment. Locations were selected where several of the 50th or 85th percentile speeds were more than seven miles an hour above the posted speed limit. We also generally selected if one or two movements were more than 12 miles an hour above the posted speed limit. I'll say that these are different than the bins we used earlier on, simply because as we were kind of filtering the data, trying to find an appropriate number of places to look at, this kind of gave us that differentiation to make sure we're looking at the worst locations and trying to get the best answers we can for you. This did include locations where we were, say, either seven above at a lot of spots, or if we're seven below at a lot of spots. Because we're also interested in those locations where we're not getting the traffic through as quickly. From this filtering, we selected 38 different locations that are represented in the red dots. So it is, you know, a good majority of them in the downtown area, but we did spread out quite a bit because we found different locations. And this data was collected in May before schools let out. So for this speed data, we used something called a Houston Radar Armadillo Tracker. You can see the unit as it was deployed up in that upper right-hand picture there. It uses a radar to measure individual vehicle size and speed. Generally, we want them about six feet above the ground, and we want them kind of in an open space where they have a good view of the roadway. One nice thing about this is this unit is not really noticeable. So if you think about if there's a speed board or something like that, people notice that slowdown. This, no one notices what these are. So we are getting a good feel of what it actually is in normal operating conditions. I'm just going to go through a couple of the locations so you can see the data we got. We'll have the full information within our report itself. So if we look at one of our locations on Hyasampa Village Lane, this is a spot where the posted speed limit is 25 miles an hour. Given the volume, we selected a two-hour count increment. So this was from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And from the results of this, you can see that we had the 50th percentile speed was at 33, and the 85th percentile speed was at 36 miles an hour. Now, the 85th, we always want to calculate that because that's, again, where you're looking at, okay, how does that relate to the posted speed limit? Because generally, you're looking at 85th while you're setting posted speed limits. So looking at the results of the speed data and how the roadway is set up and how it feels if you're driving it, you know, are there lots of driveways? Is there center-to-way left turn lane? What does the shoulders look like? We looked at the speed and kind of the setting of the roadway. And for instance, in this location, looking at this, we recommended a slight increase to the posted speed for this location because it seemed appropriate that we bumped the speed up just a little bit to try to harmonize the speed volumes. Because what we're looking at not only is what the absolute speed is, we worry about that spread of what the speeds are. If you can bring that posted speed up just a few miles an hour, and you bring up that lower end, you're now going to have more traffic traveling at the same speed, which is always going to be one of our goals, is we want to try to keep everybody moving about the same speed as everyone else out there.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On this, do you mind if I ask a question?
Didn't see your notice.
I know.
Okay. Councilwoman can't tell me.
Thank you. Is this graphic right here, is that indicating that 95% of the people were going above the speed limit?
Correct.
That's a lot.
It is. And that's another reason why we look at it, you know, for instance, in this location, when we were looking at the roadway, so it was posted 25, and we look at the setting of the road. And a lot of the features of the roadway didn't really provide, it's called side friction. It doesn't really provide the feeling that you should be slowing down. And that's, you know, if there's lots of driveways, if there's buildings somewhat closer to the roadway, something that makes you feel like you're going faster. If the roadways open up and are a little wider, it's generally always a little harder to control speeds because the setting feels more, I don't know, maybe suburban, or just, it's more open and easier to free-flow the traffic. So that's another reason where we're looking at all the information. It's like, it feels, given the setting, the results of this, that a slight bump of the speed limit may be appropriate to try to give ourselves a better overall operation.
Thank you.
So the other location I wanted to look at was one of the data collections on Prescott Lakes Parkway. This is a location where the spot speed, or sorry, the posted speed is 45. Again, this was a two-hour count period in the morning. And with our results, again, 50th and 85th percentile were trending above the speed limit. But given the location and how everything was set with this roadway, instead of increasing the speed limit, this felt more appropriate to try to work on installing something to get the high-end speeds back down toward everybody else. Because we already had, you know, looking at it, 45 seemed like an appropriate speed limit for the setting. So we're going to try to get people back down to that 45 using different measures we'll talk about later on.
So is this for the entire length of Prescott Lakes Parkway?
No. This is, yeah, north of the Walmart driveway is where this individual location was taken. Because...
Okay.
I think we took two or three on Prescott Lakes Parkway. And this is kind of the results of looking at where streetlights showed, we were either trending above or below. So then we got this data itself. And any recommendations are kind of somewhat localized to where these spot speeds were. But, you know, through talking with Ian, we talked around, to say, the speed limit changes, and we have logical terminology for those.
Yeah, I've noticed that frequently when I'm driving in the right lane. Because the slope is descending so steeply, a lot of vehicles will just accelerate without actually accelerating and pushing on their, on their gas. They're just increasing because of the gravity, so to speak. So if I'm in the right lane, I'm trying to put on my brakes to keep it below 50. I've got cars in the left lane just going right past. So it's not necessarily a conscious attempt to speed. It's just a function of the, of the slope on that road, I think.
Yep. Yep. And I think this is a locate, that's kind of where we have looked at, okay, this might be a spot to install an active speed sign. So it's something where, you know, you're unconsciously just speeding up as you go down. Now you have this sign that's going to, you know, hey, by the way, you're going 55 now. You might want to tap the brakes a little bit. So going on that speed information, so the evaluation suggested several areas to consider for recommendations. The travel time analysis identified intersections and corridors for signal improvements. We'll talk about those in a couple of slides. Then the spot speed analysis identified areas where changes may be desired, either looking at increasing the posted speed limit, increased enforcement of the existing speed limits, another option as well, also looking at implementation of traffic calming, and in general, also public awareness. So whatever you do, anything you can do, also communicate, oh, hey, by the way, folks, this is what we're doing. We're installing something or doing these treatments. This is why we're doing it. And, you know, through that public awareness, people can become aware of that. And hopefully, if nothing else, it's, they know, working on trying to help things, or also, oh, by the way, we're focusing on something on this corridor. Let's, let's think about our speed here. So I have a little flow chart, kind of went through what we've been talking about here. So if we found a spot with a location with that high 85th percentile speed, we then look at that setting. Are we in a residential area? Is there quite a bit of horizontal curvature present? Is it an urban roadway cross-section? Okay, some of those items might say, okay, now we're going to think about traffic calming. Because really, this is a location where what's happened is our speeds are creeping up, and they shouldn't be. We got to get those back down. But say, if we're more in a commercial area, it's a straight roadway, or it's a rural section with shoulders, this is maybe a more open location that maybe we consider a speed limit change potentially. So looking at the speed limit changes, we did recommend five locations. Hyasampa Village Lane from Copper Basin Road to Thumbbutte, Gurley from McCormick to Park, Miller Valley Road from Hillside to Four Points, and also Williamson Valley Road from North 40 to the 45 zone in the county itself. These are all spots where we recommend a five-mile-per-hour bump, because this is the idea of we're trying to harmonize the traffic and get more people traveling in that same general pace of traffic, so that we don't have people passing, going 15 miles an hour fast, and we're going to get you more within those speed limits. So that's kind of, those are locations where we proposed raising speed limits. The other locations we discussed, we're looking at traffic calming measures. And again, I have a map here, and you can see they're scattered throughout the city. And this is going to be a mix of looking at speed signs, or also in residential areas, potentially speed tables. Also, there's one location where, looking at the roadway, there is a twiddle. So an idea was to put a raised island in the median, because anytime you get that vertical, something in the roadway that will generally always help pull traffic down, because you get, you know, it's the, there's things in the roadway, so you're more present of it, and you tend to slow down a little bit. Now, I know the text is a little small, but this is a list out of the report that will be provided, that has the details of what we're talking about at the individual locations. So when we look at, back to that travel time analysis, we are identifying signals that may need additional evaluation. This is being caused by poor travel times or congestion that occurred at these corridors or the signals themselves. So there were some various standalone signals identified throughout the city. Also, you know, the main ones we looked at were Gurley Street and Gail Gardner Way was showing, it's definitely impacting both Gurley and Gail Gardner Way itself. Also, Willow Creek Road and Pioneer Parkway was showing some impacts. And Prescott Lakes Parkway at 69 was also another one that was really starting to show a spike and cause some issues with operations. There are also a couple of corridors. Sheldon Street itself, from Montezuma to Gurley, seemed like some signal timing work might be able to help smooth that out a little bit. Also on Whipple Street, from Willow Creek Road to Ruth Street, and on Willow Creek Road itself, from Lake Willa, or Willow Lake Drive to Commerce Drive. So those were all locations where, if we think back to those 95th percentiles, a lot of those Ds, Es, and Fs were corresponding very well to where signals were located. So that led to this list of, these things will probably help if we can find any solutions to better accommodate the traffic that's going through them. The downtown congestion was identified as well, as Ian was mentioning. You know, the goal is to slow traffic and create a balance. So what can be done there is going to be a little more complicated and can be looked at further as time goes on. And that is the end of what I have for you. I'll hand it back to Ian.
So, next steps. It's basically summarized on two slides. They, they kind of go together. So if you have questions, you might want to see the second one also. But basically, now that we've, you know, come to this point and kind of given you at least the initial information, there's a lot of information in there that you're not seeing, obviously, because we're just highlighting some of the things that will be looked at. So we, the intent is for staff to go back, finalize the report, it's nearly finalized, have them finalize the report, review and bring recommendations from the study to the PBTC, Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Traffic Committee for input.
Excuse me for a minute, Ian. Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. You know, we, and my biggest problem with all of this is that it seems like even adjusting the speeds, we're going to be breaking the law less than we were breaking it before. And, you know, I, I have a real problem with, let's say, Hacienda Village Lane, where, you know, in my mind, it probably ought to be 35, except for the fact that there's so many curves and so many ups and downs. But, you know, on Hacienda Village Lane, on Prescott Lakes Parkway going down to 89, and I got to tell you, you're riding your brake the whole time. And, you know, it's, it's not safe from, from that standpoint, because you've always got somebody coming up behind you that just took the curve. And going up Prescott Lakes Parkway, up to the top of the hill, I mean, I'm talking about before you get to 89. It's, it's crazy. It's just, you know, there are people going a million miles an hour in there. You know, I mean, how do we, how do we visually make people say, I shouldn't be going this fast?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so, I mean, one of the issues is that if we, if we have a community where we identify roadways where the posting is maybe inappropriate, you know, we need to fix that problem. I think that's some of what we're finding in this report might be that we have some streets that are underposted. Maybe not a lot, but we do. If we can get them, if we can get our streets properly posted, so that the feel of the roadway encourages in itself drivers to stay within a range, you know, no one strictly adheres to the exact speed limit pretty much on any road, nearly no one. I won't say no one. But if we can make sure that the conditions on the roadway fit the speed limit, then that reduces the tendency for people to be these outliers. And, you know, it was touched on, but if, you know, big speed differentials is, is a safety issue. So if you're going down Prescott Lakes, down the hill from Walmart, and you're going 45, and everyone else is going 60, that's a problem. Now, how do we solve that? We have to look at options and see what we can do to solve those things. But we should not underpost roads and then artificially or expect our police to try to ticket 94% of the people or somehow do that. That's, that's not realistic. So I think one of the things that we need, you know, we were going to take from this report is, do we have locations where we do have issues? We need to think long and hard about how we can try to address them. If we can have simple solutions where we just adjust speed limits, I think we should take those actions and, and fix it that way, because there might be places where we're just underposting. I think you've all been to communities where you've been on roadways that are five lanes wide, and they're 25 miles an hour, and you say to yourself, there's an issue here. Most people, you know, see that. So I don't have an easy solution for you. If I did, we'd have fixed the problem long ago, because speeding is a huge issue and it's going to continue. But I think this study will give us some tools. You know, our goal is to look at the study, look at it with strand, come out with recommendations, look at it with PBTC. But staff wants to take a good, hard look at it and the segment information, and see what recommendations we think really make sense or would help. And then have a conversation with PBTC, and then come back and try to get some projects together that we think will help. And then we can use this information to partner with PD. You know, if there are locations where there's nothing we can do but maybe focus enforcement, that's probably a good thing, too. This will be information that's useful for that.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Kyle and his strand team for...
I'd like to thank Kyle and his Strand team for collecting this data because I think you were spot on and Ian is right. Now we have some tools that we can work with on the Pedestrian Bike Traffic Advisory Committee. One of the areas you were spot on was identifying Senator Highway. As people are driving into town, they're out in the forest one minute and then abruptly they're in the city of Prescott where you have a neighborhood foothills subdivision. And we've been working with that neighborhood, trying to get people to slow down. And then it transitions into Mount Vernon. It's very, another abrupt change. And we've also heard from the Mount Vernon neighborhood about people speeding and running the stop signs. So I think this is a very good start. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we need to emphasize the fact that the analysis is based upon current additions, current conditions. One of the things I think we'd like to see is if no mitigating changes are made, how would that affect future traffic problems? So I think it's important that we utilize this type of information to, to make some corrections. I know the comment about if you have a large percentage of drivers that are exceeding the posted limit, but there are no measurable risks involved, we're not seeing accidents, then we're probably underposting the speed limit. Because in essence, what we're seeing is that the drivers are driving safely. If you define that by a lack of accidents or other conditions, then we probably can increase the speed limit because that's what the drivers are driving in a, in a safe manner, rather than just say, well, it's been 35 for 20 years, so it should always be 25 or 35. I think that's pretty clear in parts of Williamson Valley Road where as soon as you enter the county, all of a sudden, the speed limit goes up 10 miles an hour. And in essence, it's the same street with the same width. And they even have streets coming in the, the side of that main arterial without any real noticeable problems, other than the fact that it's snowing or icy. So I think that's an example of how come it's 10 miles an hour slower on, at one level and then immediately 10 miles an hour safer after you pass the county line. So there's situations like that that I think if we're intending to be able to move vehicles in a safe manner and keep the, the flow of traffic moving, then we need to look at where the, where the posting is. And if it's justified to increase it five or 10 miles an hour and it remains a safe arterial, then we should be able to do that. But just because people are speeding in other areas, that's not safe. That just doesn't justify increasing the speed limit. Maybe it justifies doing more traffic enforcement.
Yeah, that's why this, the study is good because it's broken down into segments. So you can really get into the details and see as roadway geometrics or conditions change, you can have varying speed limits, too. You know what I mean, where they change, but those are all good points. So we intend to create a prioritized project list to address speed mitigation, you know, locations that need that, a prioritized project list where travel time or congestion has been noted. And then as appropriate, a list of speed limit changes for implementation. The likely speed and travel time mitigation projects will likely be combined or grouped together. So if you, if you consider or think about what we've been doing with Willow Creek Road, and I'll, I'll say that, too. So this data on Willow Creek Road, the travel time data came prior to the implementation of all the improvements that have been underway and primarily implemented now. So because we reached back with electronic data to look at that, some of those changes likely were probably doing better than we were. But that's a good example of how we would look at this. So if we have individual intersections that have been identified like Gail Gardner and Gurley or other ones that we own that are standalones, we'd likely package those into one project to buy the equipment maybe needed because a lot of times to, if it's not just timing, we might have to do some better detection or things like that. So we'll package improvements that we need to do and then bring those forward maybe in the budget, during the budget process. So at least we can have you guys consider those and then put those into the CIP for future implementation. And then the same with speed. So if we have multiple locations that are identified for radar feedback signs, while they're individually not very expensive, if you have a lot of locations, we could, we will likely package those into like a project to address multiple conditions at multiple locations and do the same thing. So develop project detail sheets and cost estimates, put it in the budget process, then you would consider it that way. Other things, though, for instance, might not cost money, might be able to be implemented more immediately, that might be speed limit changes. So some of those things might not need to go through the budget process. They could be brought in other ways for implementation. And as Katie said, you know, we've been getting feedback, but if you have any, you know, other feedback that you'd like to give us prior to, because we're nearly at the end of the presentation, love to hear it now, love to hear it later. But that's our plan and I think that's probably all I had for you. Yep. Unless you have other questions.
Yeah, I know, Ian, that we've invested quite a bit of money in some of the vehicle detection monitoring units on Willow Creek Road and then being able to take that detection of movement and then coordinate that with a signal timing so we can have a more ongoing flow of traffic. I think there's a lot of drivers that if they knew that they stayed at a certain speed, they'd be hitting green lights all the way, they'd probably stay at that speed instead of this speed up and then hit the next signal like stop and then you catch up with them because you were going the speed limit and they never did get ahead of you. We see that happening a lot, a lot frequently and particularly on Willow Creek Road. So can you speak to where we are in that process of completing that kind of broader traffic flow plan?
Yeah, so we haven't come back to you yet and we plan to do that. But, you know, through all the purchases that we made kind of individually and packaged, we did buy all the detection. We upgraded every single intersection along that corridor. And so that goes from, we'll start at the south, Gurley Street, Gurley and Grove. And we improved every single intersection on Grove, Miller Valley and Willow Creek, all the way up to basically Lone Elk at the curve near, in Deepwell. And so I think there's 26 intersections. But we've purchased all the detectors, improved all those, they're all done, bought radio and communication equipment and then upgraded the controllers and implemented all those. And then we're, we're already running the signal timing plans. And we've been doing that for several months. People may or may not notice that. I think, I certainly noticed that and if you pay attention. A lot of people don't pay attention when things change for the better. We hear the negative, but we don't hear the positive. But those have been implemented. The entire system is running. It's all coordinated and it's running the timing plans that we got from Simpo and the work with the signal timing plan that the consultant provided us with that. We've done some minor tweaks here and there just to accommodate side street traffic like near Fries and Sandretto, Willow Creek Road. That was a challenging area. But that's why I say, when we see that graphic that showed Willow Creek with all those spikes, likely what we'd like to do is maybe come back with some additional data and have the new travel time so that we can see the graphics next to each other and see some improvements. But it's running and it's done. So there will be a future time when we come to talk about that.
And I think it's up to us as a city to be able to communicate that to the driving public. Let them know that the, all the investments and connections have been made and that we're now seeing a much improved flow of traffic. So stick with the speed limit, you'll see green lights and you'll be able to get to your destination smoothly and safely.
Yep. And if you, if there's no other questions, I think that concludes our presentation.
Councilman Shishka. Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. I've always wondered, so we coordinate the lights and you go 30 and you hit every green light, but that also means that somebody is going to hit every red light? Is that true?
Yeah, so, so the way, you know, the way we're doing it is obviously we're favoring inbound traffic in the AM, favoring outbound traffic in the PM, you know, because that's what people are doing. The main impact will be if you're in that queue or in that platoon as it goes through, you know, you're going to see improvements. There's obviously times when you can get in and you can miss it. But for the majority of traffic, the efficiency goes up on the main line. The real impact to a coordinated system will be impacts to the side streets. Because we, in implementing these timing plans, we've actually increased the overall cycle time of the signal and most of the time in the PM peaks is added to the main line. So the side street traffic waits maybe a little longer in those peak periods. And it runs like an AM, a midday and a PM, and then it breaks off, we'll call that a free or a off-peak kind of period time where you might get quicker access on the side street once six or seven comes. So we've heard some complaints and we've made some tweaks because, you know, when we first implemented, Sandretto by Fries has a lot of side street traffic. People in the PM go shopping and they come out and they notice the difference where when the light turned green for them on the side street, they got a reduced amount of time as they, when they used to. Used to get like 10 cars through and now they're like, if you hesitated, it might take you two cycles. So those are the downsides of coordinated systems, but you're looking at improvements for the majority of the cars and the, you know, most traffic. But overall, we haven't had a lot of negative comments, so that's good. And if you don't hear something, it probably means things are good, doesn't mean things are bad usually.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Well, I do want to thank Strand Associates for your diligent collection of data and the recommendations you've brought forward. And Ian, you certainly have your work to do to start implementing some of these recommendations, look at where the priorities are and start checking off the boxes. And then I think our ability to communicate some of these improvements that we're, have completed and we're going to continue to implement will be important for the driving public to be able to see if they follow the recommended speed limits. Their driving experience is going to be much improved.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing further, then I think we'll adjourn this study session.